Leave the main floor of the chambers. There is additional seating upstairs in the balcony. Thank you.
Good afternoon. The stated meeting for April 9th, 2019 of the New York City Council will come to order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Vocal?
Adams.
Present.
Amprey Samuel. Ayala.
Present.
Barron.
Present.
Borelli. Brannon. Cabrera. Chin.
Here.
Cohen.
Here.
Constantinides. Carnegie. Deutsch.
Yeah.
Diaz. Drum.
Here.
Espinal. Eugene. Gibson.
I'm here.
Jonai.
Present.
Gordenchik. Holden.
Here.
Kalos.
Here.
King.
Present.
Koo. Kozlitz. Lanceman. Lander. Levin. Levine.
Here.
Mizel. Manchaca.
Presente.
Miller.
Present.
Moya. Perkins. Powers.
Here.
Reynoso. Richards.
Present.
Rivera.
Present.
Rodriguez. Rose.
Here.
Rosenthal.
Here.
Salamanca.
Present.
Torres. Moya. Trager.
Here.
Ulrich. Malone.
Here.
Van Bremer.
Here.
Jaeger.
Here.
Mattio. Combo.
Present.
Speaker Johnson.
Thank you. We will now have today's invocation which will be delivered by Reverend Pastor Frederick Crawford of Union Grove Missionary Baptist Church which is located at 1488 Hope Avenue in the Bronx. Will you bow your head as we pray? Father, I thank you for all who have gathered here today. I thank you for our elected officials who have come to handle the business of our city. I pray that you will bless the agenda that is set before them, that it be fruitful for all mankind and womankind. Help us to make the best of our time here today. Bless each and every council member as they continue to serve us. Thank you for our public advocate and all who gather. Let this meeting be conducted in harmony even when there's disharmony. Thank you for your many and wonderful blessings. In the name we pray, amen. Thank you Pastor Crawford. I ask Councilmember Salamanca to spread the invocation on the record.
Thank you, Mr. Public Advocate. We would like to welcome Reverend Frederick Crawford to the City Council. Reverend Crawford is a native of the Bronx. He is the oldest of four children, born to Reverend Dr. Fletcher and Mother Crawford. Having served for 12 years, he is the third generation of pastors of Union Grove Missionary Baptist Church. His father, Dr. Fletcher Crawford, served for 50 years, and his grandfather, Reverend Jeremiah Crawford, was the organizer of Union Grove Missionary Baptist Church. Prior to his leadership at Union Grove, Reverend Frederick Crawford pastored the First Calvary Baptist Church in Harlem for 20 years. Upon Dr. Fletcher Crawford's retirement, Reverend Crawford was installed as pastor at Union Grove on August 20th, 2006. Pastor Crawford is happily married to First Lady Crawford, and they share four children together. Thank you again for being here.
Thank you, Councilmember, adoption of minutes.
I motion that the minutes of stated meeting in February 28th, 2019 be adopted as printed.
Thank you, Councilmember Miller. Messages and papers from the mayor?
None.
Communication from city, county, and borough offices?
None.
Petitions and communications?
None.
Land use call-ups?
None.
We will now have communication from the speaker.
Thank you, Public Advocate. Great to see you again up in that great chair. Good afternoon. I would thank you all for being here with us on this Tuesday. We have a busy agenda ahead of us. Before we begin, before we begin, I'd like to remember some of those who have passed in the week since our last stated meeting. Last week, three retired FDNY members who had 9/11-related illnesses died within 48 hours of each other. Timothy O'Neill, a retired FDNY lieutenant; Kevin Lennon, a firefighter; and Michael Andretchi, a fire marshal. Our thoughts and prayers are with these brave New Yorkers' families, friends, and the entire fire department. The FDNY suffered another loss this week when Christopher Slutman, a 15-year veteran of the department, was among four Americans killed by a roadside bomb near U.S. Base in Afghanistan. Our hearts are with Christopher's spouse, his children, and the entire FDNY. And finally, yesterday, in Midtown Manhattan, Nelson Salinas, a construction worker, succumbed to injuries following a scaffolding collapse. Our prayers and thoughts are with him and his family during this horrible time. Now I ask that we all rise and take a moment of silence in honor of those that we lost. Thank you. I also want to acknowledge today is Councilmember Donovan Richards' birthday, so happy, happy birthday Donovan. As a present, I'm voting aye on your bill today. Let's dive deep into our agenda. The council will vote on the following land use items: An application to rezone the former Parkway Hospital in Councilmember Karen Kozowitz's district. This rezoning will facilitate the rehabilitation of the vacant hospital building with 135 units of housing, 100%, which will be senior affordable housing, and it will facilitate the construction of a new 216-unit residential building on the same property. I know this piece of property has been vacant for a long time, and I know that Councilmember Kozowitz has been pushing hard for a long time to build senior affordable housing there, so I want to congratulate her on this big day. We're going to be voting on the approval of 809 Atlantic Avenue in Majority Leader Lori Combo's district for rezoning and for special permits to facilitate a 29-story mixed-use building with 286 housing units, including permanently affordable housing. We're going to vote on 103 North 13th Street in Councilmember Steve Levin's district, a proposed seven-story mixed building with retail office and required light industrial space. We're going to vote at 245 East 53rd Street in Councilmember Keith Powers's district to add a commercial overlay to allow for a new six-story building with a ground-floor commercial use. And finally, we're going to vote on the designation of the Park Terrace West, West 217, 17th Street Historic District in Wood, in Councilmember Edana Rodriguez's district. I know he's worked on this for a long time, and it wasn't easy, and I want to congratulate him as well on today. I want to thank the staff who worked on this: John Douglas, Jeff Campania, Brian Paul, Jeff Ewen, and our land use director Raju Man. The council will vote on a resolution that amends the rules of the Land Use Committee to clarify and reorganize language that has remained largely unchanged since the Land Use Committee was established in 1990, and to make certain substantive changes to improve the committee's functioning, and will also be voting on changing committee assignments and creating new committees and eliminating committee. We're going to be voting on that. Moving on, the council will vote on the following pieces of legislation. The council will vote on a few bills concerning water tank inspection and safety. New York City has the best drinking water in the country, and that is in no small part due to the strong measures we've taken in the past to regulate the 8,000 to 10,000 water tank structures in our city. While our existing laws are strong, the council is committed to ensuring that there are no loopholes or any opportunities to tamper with inspection results when it comes to our drinking water. The bills we're voting on today will further ensure compliance, allowing New Yorkers to continue to feel confident that their water is always safe, clean, and protected. The first bill we're going to vote on is Introduction 1053A, which I sponsored, which would require building owners to ensure that water tank inspection companies submit annual inspection reports directly to the Department of Health and Mental Hygiene. Introduction 1056B, sponsored by Councilmember Costa Constantinides, would require the Department of Health and Mental Hygiene to conduct periodic audits of buildings' annual water tank inspection documentation, and it will require DOHMH to conduct 125 inspections of water tanks selected at random to help ensure the accuracy of the annual inspection reports it receives and requires the Health Department to post the results of such periodic audits and inspections online. Next, we're going to vote on Introduction 1138A, sponsored by Councilmember Alika Amprey Samuel, and it will require the Department of Health and Mental Hygiene to conduct additional reviews of documentation of water tank inspections without providing prior notice to building owners where harmful bacteria are found or where certain violations are identified by the Health Department. This bill would require the Department to post the results of these reviews online. Introduction 1050A, sponsored by Councilmember Ben Kalos, would allow the Health Department to require that water tank inspection results be submitted electronically to the department. Introduction 1057B, sponsored by our Health Committee Chair, Mark Levine, would require that water tank inspectors be either licensed master plumbers, work under the direct and continuing supervision of such licensed master plumber, or be a registered design professional. This bill would also require that the cleaning, painting, and coating of water tanks be conducted by an individual qualified to conduct water tank inspections or by a person who holds a commercial pesticide applicator certification. Introduction 1167A, sponsored by Councilmember Rafael Salamanca, would require building owners to repair damage to water tanks or their supporting structures and would impose a civil penalty for the failure to do so. An introduction 1169A, sponsored by Councilmember Richie Torres, would require visual evidence of water tanks, such as photographs or videos, to be submitted with inspection results to the Department of Health and Mental Hygiene. I want to thank the staff who worked on this: Sarah List, Z. Emmanuel Halu, Emily Balkin, and Andrea Vasquez. Next, we're going to vote on a series of bills aimed at protecting individuals on probation and incarcerated individuals. Those next bills, these next bills, will provide protections for individuals on probation and folks who are incarcerated. We are at a time where we're trying to remove a lot of barriers to people who are on probation or who are incarcerated, and they face a difficult time being reintegrated into society, so these bills are a very important step. Introduction 1427, sponsored by a real leader on this issue and the Chair of our Public Safety Committee, Councilmember Donovan Richards, will prohibit the Department of Probation from requiring marijuana testing unless abstinence from marijuana has been determined to be necessary to lead an otherwise law-abiding life. Introduction 944A, sponsored by Councilmember Roy Lanceman, well, he's the Chair of our Justice Committee. It will ensure the Department of Corrections is promptly notifying incarcerated individuals and their attorneys when they are detained solely due to bail set and the amount of less than $10, and then allow them to post it and get released. An introduction 1199A, sponsored by the Chair of our Criminal Justice Committee, Keith Powers, would remove the 2% fee on credit card payments made online and the 8% fee charged on credit card payments when paying in person at correctional facilities, and improve access to bail payment for individuals and families of limited financial means. I want to thank the staff who worked on this: Brian Crowe, Alana Sivin, Keishore Ndene, Daniel Adis, and I want to thank them all for their work on this. Finally, the council will vote on a groundbreaking bill which would prohibit drug testing for marijuana as a condition for hiring. It is Introduction 1445, sponsored by our public advocate, Ymani Williams, who worked on this when he was a member of this body, and it prohibits New York City employers from requiring a prospective employee to be tested for marijuana. Marijuana is now legal in several states and cities across the country. Medical marijuana is legal in our state, and recreational marijuana may soon be legal. New York City employers should not disqualify candidates because of their legal use of marijuana prior to their employment. Drug testing for marijuana is imprecise. False positives can occur up to a month after use and do not necessarily indicate that a person is impaired at the moment of testing. For all of these reasons, I am very happy we are moving this bill today, and I support it. I want to thank the staff who worked on this package: Rachel Cordero, Balkis Mirig, Malcolm Butthorn, and Leah Skirpiak. That concludes our agenda for today's stated meeting, and I look forward to proceeding with today's votes. Thank you, Mr. Public Advocate.
Thank you. We'll now move into discussion of general orders. First, we have Councilmember Cohen.
Thank you, Mr. Public Advocate. With permission, I'd like to vote on all orders on the general order calendar today.
Permission granted.
Thank you. I vote aye.
And Councilmember Constantinides.
Mr. Public Advocate, with permission, I'd like to vote on all items coupled on the general order and resolution calendar today.
Permission granted.
I vote aye.
And Councilmember Kalos.
New York City water is the best in the world, straight from the tap, and we aim to keep it that way. In school, we learned to drink eight glasses of water a day, and as a New Yorker, it is a point of pride that my eight glasses come straight from the tap. Thanks to groundbreaking reporting by city and state, we learned about the lax oversight of water towers throughout our city. This legislative package will reform that oversight, requiring real inspections and regular cleaning. Introduction 1150A requires electronic recording of these water towers' inspections and cleaning so New Yorkers can see for themselves that the water coming out of their tap is clean. Thank you to Speaker Corey Johnson and Health Chair Mark Levine for getting this done. I urge you to vote aye on 1150A and the entire package, so we can serve faith in our city's amazing water supply.
Thank you, and just briefly on my bill 1445A, I just thank all of the council for putting this up, and I encourage everyone to vote. This is to take away an artificial barrier to employment. This testing isn't a deterrent to using marijuana, it's an impediment to opportunity. A Vox report reported that as many as 70% of large employers utilize pre-employment drug screenings encompassing as many as 40% of jobs. If you ingest weed in whatever manner a month ago, I'm not sure how that prevents you from doing your job now. Most employers do not test for alcohol, and we believe that marijuana should at least be at the same level as alcohol. This should not be confused or conflated with saying that you should be allowed to go to work high or otherwise impaired. This does not do that. You should not be going to work drunk, and you should not be going to work high. This does not make any of those things legal or prevent employers from firing them. There are some exemptions that were put here, and in terms of moving this forward, we always have negotiations. I'd like to revisit some of those as well, because I believe no employer should be doing this, because it is not a matter of safety as specifically been a barrier for employment. But I thank everyone who worked on this bill, and I'm looking forward and hoping everyone will vote aye on it. And now last, we have Councilmember Jaeger.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's good to see you up there. Welcome again. I realize this hasn't been spoken yet on this floor today. I don't know if these comments will encourage a response, they're not intended to, but I feel that I think we should have this conversation in public, not in private. When we took our oaths of office before promising to faithfully execute the duties of council member, we promised to support the Constitution of the United States. That includes our commitment to the right to free speech. Whether one agrees with the speech or disagrees, the right to free speech is fundamental to our democratic society. Like many, and I've spoken about this before in this chamber, I too am the child and grandchild of immigrants. And with that background, I've never engaged in disparaging immigrants of any kind, from wherever they've come for whatever reason. It's true, I said on Twitter that Palestine does not exist. It's also true that I repeatedly explained that it was never my point or intent to disparage people or the existence of people, notwithstanding the contrary being disingenuously said about me. But what I said remains a fact. Of course, there are Palestinian people, but there is no State of Palestine. That's not merely my opinion, though even if it were, it would still be my right to say so. That's the official position of the United States government, in every administration from both parties since the beginning of time. In 15 hearings over 15 months totaling 40 hours on the Immigration Committee, there is not a single statement anyone can point to where I have ever disparaged any person, ethnicity, or group in any way, nor on the floor of this council, nor on the steps of this building, nor anywhere else. On the contrary, I've defended and advocated for New York's immigrants. My record on that is clear. But facts play no role in this debate. That's because what I said has been used by those who want my statement to be inaccurate, even though it's not. And those whose rhetoric was far more irresponsible than mine have, through their own words, encouraged threats to my life and to the lives of my staff. Yet, to satisfy some bizarre desire for political correctness run amok, we are here today having this conversation, Mr. President. I'll wrap up in a moment. Appreciate it. Not everyone agrees with everyone. That's what makes democracy so great. Different views can be aired, ought to be aired. We can have the conversation, and we can disagree, we can agree. I respect everyone's right to say what they wish, even when one member of this body just days ago compared the existence of Israel to a biblical plague. I disagree, but I recognize the right to say so. I'm grateful to those who have stood up for free speech over the last few days, today in this chamber, anywhere else they've done so, and I ask that my colleagues think deeply about what this means next time they might say something with others disagree. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilmember Manchaca?
Thank you. I would like to speak on this topic that my neighbor is talking about. We're voting on some changes, many changes, in the committees, including the Immigration Committee, and as Chair, I have some words to speak to here. We're doing this in the light and in the ecosystem of the federal government and what it's doing every day to disempower and marginalize, intimidate, dehumanize our immigrant neighbors. The need for empathy, the need for empathy, the need for empathy has never been more obvious and important. This is especially true when we talk with and to and for our immigrant neighbors, and even more so when we legislate on their behalf. We must never forget that many immigrants in our city do not have the power to vote, despite being some of the most engaged civically. I know many colleagues in this chamber who are here because of the incredible volunteer hours put in by our immigrant neighbors. What that means for us is that their representation, and us as their representatives, is that we must exercise the highest levels of empathy to overcome the ways in which their lives are made invisible. Otherwise, we undermine the trust immigrants have in our government to act on their behalf, and our whole city falls. The Palestinian people have lived for decades under brutal occupation. No one denies that this occupation is happening, or that it has caused immense human suffering. Nor does anyone deny that the Palestinian people have the same right to self-determination as people all over the world. What people disagree about is how we get there, and that, of course, is not the purview of this City Council. What does matter for this City Council is that we have many Palestinian and those of Palestinian descent living in our city, and they, like every other immigrant group, need to know that their council and the Committee on Immigration has and is charged with protecting their rights and their interests. And we recognize that the minimal level that they have that power. And that's why we're referring to them, and that's why referring to them as so-called Palestinians is straightforwardly denying them those interests, because that phrase denies of their humanity. Palestinians do exist. Palestine does exist. Along with the denials, it's not innocent geopolitical or geographical assertion. These are phrases historically used to justify violence against Palestinians and other Arab people, and encourage people to think that Palestinians are not human.
Councilmember, can I ask you to wrap, please?
Yeah, I'll finish in my vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Van Bremer?
Permission, with your permission, I'd like to vote on all land use call-ups and coupled items on the general order calendar and all resolutions.
I gotta think about it. Permission granted.
Thank you.
And I believe this is the final. Councilmember Barron?
Thank you. With permission, I'd like to vote on all land use call-ups and all items and the resolutions and all items on the general order calendar.
Permission granted.
I vote aye on all, with the exception of land use call-up 362 through 365.
Thank you. Report of special committees?
None.
Report of standing committees?
Report on the Committee on Civil and Human Rights, Introduction 1445A, pre-employment hiring.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Criminal Justice, Introductions 944A and 1199A, bail policy.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Health, Introductions 1053A through Introductions 1169A, water tanks.
Amended and coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Land Use, Land Use 356 and Reso 830, Historic District.
Coupled on general orders.
Land Use 360 and 361, Parkway Hospital.
Approved with modifications and referred to the City Planning Commission pursuant to Rule 11.70B of the Rules of the Council and Section 197D of the New York City Charter.
Land Use 362 and Reso 831 through Land Use 365 and Reso 834, Atlantic Avenue rezoning.
Coupled on general orders.
Land Use 367 and Resolution 835 and Land Use Item 368 and Reso 836, 41 Summit Street.
Coupled to be filed pursuant to letter of withdrawal.
Land Use 370 and Reso 837 through Land Use 372 and Resolution 839, 103 North 13th Street.
Coupled on general orders.
Land Use 381 and Reso 840, East 53rd Street rezoning.
Coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Public Safety, Introduction 1427, drug testing.
Coupled on general orders.
Report of the Committee on Rules, Privileges, and Elections, Preconsidered Resolution 841, amend the rules of the council.
Coupled on general orders.
General Order Calendar, Introduction 720, Site Safety Training.
Laid over.
Land Use 360 and Reso 842 and LU 361 and Reso 843, Parkway Hospital.
Coupled on general orders.
Resolution Appointing Various Persons, Commissioner of Deeds.
Coupled on general orders, and at this time, I am asking for a roll call vote on all of the items on today's general order calendar.
Adams.
Permission to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
Thank you. Councilmember Jaeger and I began our journey in the New York City Council together last year, and I've always admired his confidence and his conviction, and I consider him to be a friend. But as members of this body, we are representatives of not just our constituents, but of all New Yorkers. Our public iterances should reflect care and concern for all New Yorkers. It takes discretion and a bit of restraint to hold this seat, and it is with a heavy heart that I vote aye on all. Words matter. People matter.
Amprey Samuel. Ayala.
Aye on all.
Borelli. Brannon.
Aye.
Mattio.
Noa, 944, 1199, 1427, 1445, and pre-considered Reso 841. Aye on the rest.
Cabrera.
Chin.
Aye on all.
Carnegie. Deutsch.
Permission to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
Thank you. My constituents, I'd like to speak on Reso 841. My constituents did not elect me to police my colleagues about their opinions on foreign policy. They elected me to represent their interest in the City Council. Foreign policy is just not something we are always going to agree upon. We come from different places, different ethnicities, and different belief systems. We are truly a diverse body, and that diversity must extend to diversity of thought. We are all New Yorkers. We all have strong minds and strong wills, but we must, as a body, learn to be better at agreeing to disagree and without penalizing the minority opinion. We have a lot of work to do in the next few years. We need to maintain the mutual respect that forces a free and open exchange of ideas so that we can work together for the betterment of all New Yorkers.
so that we can work together for the betterment of all New Yorkers. Finally, I just want to remind my colleagues that social media is a casual setting. It's about impact, not substance, and it's certainly not the best medium for an in-depth conversation about complicated issues. With that understanding, we should read what we see on Twitter with informal nature and which it was intended. With the greatest respect for all, I vote no on eight forty-one and vote aye on the rest.
Permission to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm standing on to vote no on introduction fourteen twenty-seven, that's a drug test. Drug testing not permitted for Department of Prohibition. When somebody, someone is put in probation, put in probation, so that person had to prove that they deserve to be, he or she deserved to be given, granted that position. So, I already know that I believe that that's wrong. I believe, I vote no on resolution fourteen twenty-seven. Now we are taking away the right of business and business people to test for drug of those that they have to employ. So that's wrong. And finally, resolution eight forty-one, this city council keeps taking away people's right to speak. This city council had to stop. This is a nonsense. The First Amendment said that people had the right, freedom of expression, and when our founding father put that in there was to allow people to spread themselves. Maybe you, we don't have to like what people say. We don't have, maybe we hate what people say. Maybe we feel horrified what people say, but we had to stop trying to quiet people down this body. This body keep doing that, and this is wrong. You are violating people's First Amendment. Now, they did it to me, now they're into Jaeger, and they keep doing to people. That is wrong, that is wrong, and that is wrong. We all have the First Amendment. We don't have to like it. We don't have to eat it. We don't have to approve it, but we have something called First Amendment, the freedom to spread oppression. And this city council had to stop that. Everybody, I mean, so, so people had to like, people don't have to like what I say. People don't have to like what Jaeger said, but they had to respect my First Amendment. But you keep violating that, violating that, violating that, and then you tell me that there's no power in this house? I'm voting no on introduction four forty-five A, fourteen twenty-seven A, and eight forty-one A. I vote aye on the rest. Thank you very much.
Aye.
Espinal. Eugene.
Aye on all.
Jonai.
Permission to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
Thank you. This has probably been one of the most difficult few days for me, as I struggled with a decision that would impact me and this body. I want to make it clear that I do not agree with Councilmember Jaeger's comments. I don't get into the debate of factual or opinion, but as elected officials, we must strive to present our constituents' interests, especially on controversial issues, in a way that seeks to bring people together toward a common solution without needlessly inflaming tensions that will only serve to drive them apart. Unfortunately, my friends' recent comments failed that test, but that is my personal opinion. I don't believe that we should be censoring, or censorship should be a tool that this institution can utilize against the First Amendment right. Well, heck, nothing gets me more wound up, and I have very strong personal opinions against the American flag being burned, but we don't take actions against those individuals by stripping them of their jobs, by taking their children out of public schools. We allow them to do so under that First Amendment right, one of which I truly have strong opinions against. My background is one of a people that have been persecuted for centuries under occupation, under the strictest form of communism, where censorship was used as a tool to control people. There's a reason why it's the First Amendment and not the Second, and I'll be voting aye with deep reservations as we set protocols moving forward that are going to strip our identity, strip away the ability to speak up on matters that many may not feel comfortable with, but it's a right that makes this country so great. Thank you. It makes this country so great, and one that I value. I asked Councilmember Jaeger to resign to save this body.
Councilmember, your time's up.
I'll come around a second time if I can. I vote aye on all.
Holden.
Permission to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
I appreciate the leadership and work of my dear friend and colleague, Corey Johnson. He is truly one of the most talented elected officials we've seen in the city of New York for generations. I know he has one of the toughest jobs in the country, and with, and I have no doubt that there is no one more qualified to govern this body than Speaker Johnson. However, we as councilmembers took an oath to protect and defend the Constitution of the United States, which includes free speech. Therefore, I vote aye on all, with the exception of pre-considered reso eight four-one.
Gudenskic.
Aye on all, with the exception of resolution eight four-one, which I am abstaining on. Thank you.
Kalos.
Aye on all.
King.
Aye on all, except eight forty-one. I'm staying.
Koo.
Aye on all.
Kozlowski.
Aye, aye on all.
Lansman.
Aye on all.
Lander.
Request permission to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
Today's vote is a difficult one. Whatever we do, I fear it will continue a cycle of polarization that does not help us bring about the city or the world that we want. I do not believe that Councilmember Jaeger is a bigot. I do not believe he has hate in his heart. When we have disagreed in the past, I have generally found him to be respectful and opened a thoughtful debate. Moreover, the hideous anti-Semitic threats of violence that he and his staff have received in recent days are truly abominable. I condemn them without reservation, and I hope the NYPD will pursue enforcement aggressively. At the same time, I believe it is critical that the council's Immigration Committee be a place where all New Yorkers feel welcome and do not have to worry that their identities will be questioned or erased. In these troubled times, we need to be setting a standard for leadership that does not polarize communities against one another. As a proud Jewish New Yorker, I strongly support Israel's right to exist as a Jewish and democratic state, and I believe it is essential to stand up loud and clear against antisemitism on the right, on the left, and in the streets. At the same time, I want Palestinian New Yorkers to know that I deeply value your human rights, your self-determination, and your fundamental worth as human beings, equal to mine and that of my family and my people. We must not construct our identities in ways that existentially pit us against each other, and that's why I will be voting in favor of this resolution. I will continue to work and pray for an end to the occupation, which I believe is the only path to peace, and hopefully someday to reconciliation and mutual understanding. Closer to home, I hope we can find a path away from polarization here in this council, one that enables us to disagree with each other even very sharply, but still in ways that include all New Yorkers and build bridges of understanding here in this chamber and here in our city. That will certainly not happen through battles on Twitter, and it won't happen through votes that remove people from committees either. It'll only happen, it'll require us to do more across sharp lines of difference to find higher ground. Thank you. I vote aye on all.
Levin.
I vote aye on all.
Levine.
Aye.
Mizel.
Yes, on everything except the all and eight four-one.
Menchaca.
Permission to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
So I vote, I vote aye on all, and I want to continue with a statement and pick up where I left off and reiterate that the work that we do here as a council is one like a family, and we listen to each other, and I'm really happy that people are speaking out and speaking their voice and speaking their truth to power. Palestinians do exist, and their lives matter, and Palestine does exist, and the lives of every immigrant group here living in this city will be heard. And if we do not hold ourselves to a standard that condemns dehumanizing rhetoric, how can we claim to be standing with immigrants against this country's resurgent white nationalism or the biases and false beliefs about immigrants that underwrite the federal government's deportation machine? That we're seeing every day in reports. Our district offices are getting those reports. That's what's happening today. Less urgently, how can we claim to be a committee, an immigration committee, or a body that Palestinians can trust to consider their interests fairly if we are willing to accept language that denies them the grounds for having said interests, namely their existence? This chamber creates opportunities for people to exercise their empathy when called upon, and when such appeals do not succeed, it is on us, it is on us to do the right thing and reassure immigrants in our city that the people who represent their interests might disagree about how to do that, but they will never disagree that they are people with interests to protect. So I respect every member's thoughts and ideas in this chamber, and everyone is entitled to their opinions. But I also stand with the BLAC and the Progressive Caucus and the LGBT Caucus and the Women's Caucus that signed a letter denouncing the words of my colleague and to move forward. And so I will be voting aye on all and urge my constituents and my colleagues and everyone in the city to continue to come together and build those bridges of understanding so that we can move forward. There's a lot of work to do here, everyone. Let's do it together. Thank you.
Miller.
Aye.
Moya.
Aye.
Perkins.
Aye on all.
Powers.
Aye.
Reynoso.
I vote aye on all.
Richards.
Want to wish my wife a happy anniversary. I was born for her, and with that being said, I vote aye.
Very nice. Nice.
Rivera.
Aye on all.
Rodriguez.
Permission to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
I believe that the whole world, including our city, has the responsibility to support the two-state solution, the only solution that we have on the table that has been discussed for a number of years, a solution that will bring peace to children of Israel and Palestine. I believe that our city should not have a space for any message of hate, and with that, I vote aye.
Rose.
Aye.
Rosenthal.
Aye.
Salamanca.
Aye on all.
Torres. Trager.
Permission to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
I have known Calum Jaeger for many years and consider him to be a friend. He has a long record of public service on behalf of many communities, and I do not believe that he has hateful intentions. While my colleague may have believed that his tweets were glib or idle, we have heard from many Palestinian New Yorkers about the harm and hurt his comments have caused them and their children. In 2019, we need to understand and appreciate that our words on social media constitute official communications and will be weighed with concomitant gravity. As a proud Jew, as someone whose parents fled their home in the Soviet Union because they were persecuted because they were Jews, as someone whose family suffered for their identity, as someone who knows the struggle of my people to find a homeland, I cannot accept comments that dispossess thousands of New Yorkers of their identity. There are those who will attempt to frame today's votes as a witness test of one's commitment to Israel and the Jewish people. There are those who will view my vote as a betrayal. I reject this binary. It is possible to embrace Israel without negating the identities of Palestinians or denigrating their desire for a homeland. It is possible to advocate for Israel without engaging in rank or enmity. Indeed, our coalition is strengthened when we exercise empathy and resist extremes. Ultimately, as elected officials, our legacies are defined by our impact, not our intentions. Our words hold weight. The impact of my colleagues' ill-considered comments has been clear. I respect the deliberations of the speaker's leadership team, and I vote aye.
Ulrich.
I vote aye on all, with the exception of intro fourteen twenty-seven, fourteen forty-five, and I'm voting no on pre-considered reso eight forty-one. My position on that, I've already articulated. I believe in civil liberties. I don't agree with what everybody here says all the time, but I do support your right to say it, and I don't like to see anybody's free speech censored in any way. I think that that is not what we're supposed to be about, so I vote no on eight forty-one and aye on all others. Thank you.
Valone.
Aye on all, but even in today's hearing, there are comments that probably have just offended people, so I ask us to be vigilant in comments that we've just said. I just heard that we're surrounded by white resurgent nationalism. I am not that person. I'm tired of being referred to someone like that, and that's part of the problem with today. You just have to be careful with your words. I would not get myself into that situation. That's the way I was brought up. I agree with what we're doing today. We need to be better responsible with our words because they hurt, and we have to be careful. So with that, I say aye on all. Thank you.
Jaeger.
Mr. President, may I have the excuse to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
Thank you, sir. Today's election day in Israel, as many as a million Palestinians will cast votes. There have been Palestinian members of the Israeli parliament in every parliament since the foundation of the modern state of Israel. But in Gaza and the West Bank, there are no elections, today or any day, and that's because the leadership of the Palestinian Authority is an authoritarian regime. The president of the Palestinian Authority is now in the fifteenth year of his five-year term to which he was originally elected. Gaza is controlled by Hamas, which wages nearly daily attacks on the citizens of Israel, kills political opponents, persecutes gays, subjugates women, and terrorizes journalists who dare challenge their authority. But the problem, of course, is Israel, isn't it? Or at least, that's what those who challenge my statements would have you believe. When I say there is no Palestinian state, I am not denying the existence of Palestinian people. I've said that before, I'll say it again. Of course, there are Palestinian people, but there is no Palestinian state. I'm not speaking of people who wish to live their lives peacefully and in harmony, whether in the Middle East, or whether here in New York City, or in my hometown of Brooklyn. But there is no state, and nothing I say, nor any vote we take today, will change that fact. The votes are cast, not going to be silenced, and no one who truly cares about democracy should want me or anyone else in this body or any legislature in this nation to be silenced. I will continue speaking up against antisemitism wherever I see it, whether it's in Washington, DC, or in New York City, or right here on Broadway. I'll speak up about it. I won't be silenced. I vote aye on all, with the exception of intros fourteen twenty-seven, fourteen twenty-five, which I believe are silly government overreach. I vote no on resolution eight forty-one. I vote aye on all. I include intro eleven ninety-nine. I want to briefly just say, Mr. President, I support this bill. I signed on to this bill early on. I do believe we could have done better. I don't believe the city of New York or any government should profiteer off bail, and I think we should have made it effective immediately, not in six and fifteen months. And with that, I thank you very much, Mr. President, for your indulgence. Thank you.
Combo.
Permission to explain my vote?
Permission granted.
Happy to see you up there.
Thanks for allowing me.
Just wanted to recognize, there's an African proverb that says, "Until the story of the hunt is told by the lion, the tale of the hunt will always glorify the hunter." And as an African-American woman... Just wanted to recognize, there's an African proverb that says, until the story of the hunt is told by the lion, the tale of the hunt will always glorify the hunter. And as an African-American woman, what that essentially means to me is that, living in the United States, living in New York City, living in Brooklyn, there's always some entity or body for people of color that define who we are, if we're minorities, if we're the majority, if we're immigrants, if we're native, if we have a homeland, if we don't. And it's all about who is identifying who is who and where they are from. And for me, as an African-American woman, even in New York City, I have to navigate my space and my existence when I walk down the street on the sidewalk, when I get on the train, when I come to work, if I have to go to a doctor's appointment. And every day, as my community is being gentrified, it's important for communities of color in particular to feel that their existence still exists. And if we allow this kind of rhetoric and conversation to happen, just like we've seen, communities like Harlem, like Bedford-Stuyvesant will be no more. People will say that those neighborhoods have been replaced by cutesy pronouns or adjectives that is Soho, or Boho, or Hoho, or all of these different types of names to describe our history and our culture and to erase us. And that's why this is really important to me, that we speak up about this particular issue. I represent one of the largest Jewish constituents in New York City, in Crown Heights, and I have stood with my Jewish brothers and colleagues and sisters continuously to fight against hate speech. And it's important that we be consistent, that we fight against hate speech, speech that divides us, speech that could ultimately turn us into a police state, where we have to fear airstrikes. Everyone is talking about freedom of speech, but we have to be very clear that this freedom of speech could lead us into a city where we have airstrikes, where people take out their anger and their frustrations with each other through violent means. This is the situation that we're in right now. We're on the heels of people mourning from Christchurch. We're on the heels of people mourning of a shooting that took place in Orlando that have killed over forty, fifty people in prospective shootings. We have to understand that our words have meaning, and people are very volatile right now. And it's important that we take responsibility as this body. I feel in conclusion that, for me, I'm proud of this body because we fight every day so that everyone knows they have an existence, they have space, that there's enough resources, enough food, enough education for all of us, and that we don't need to fight for each other's existence. God is perfect, and he made a perfect world for us all to live here in peace. And that's what I'm working for, and I hope my colleagues are working towards that every single day. We have to be inclusive, and we cannot support divisive words. I vote aye.
Thank you. And councilmembers, if you can stay in the room until the vote is tallied.
I vote aye.
Speaker Johnson.
I vote aye.
All items in today's general order calendar are adopted by a vote of forty-four in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and zero abstentions, with the exempt, with the exception of land use, items three six-two through three six-five, and accompanying resos, which were adopted by a vote of forty-three in the affirmative, one in the negative, and zero abstentions, and intro nine four four A, which was adopted by a vote of forty-three in affirmative, one in the negative, and zero abstentions, and intro eleven ninety-nine A, which was adopted by a vote of forty-three in affirmative, one in the negative, and zero abstentions, and intro fourteen twenty-seven, which was adopted by a vote of forty affirmative, four negative, and zero abstentions, and intro fourteen forty-four A, which was adopted by a vote of forty-one in the affirmative, three in the negative, and zero abstentions. I have a quick correction. So just to recount, actually, intro fourteen forty-five A was adopted by a vote of forty-one in the affirmative, four in the negative, and zero abstentions, and Resolution eight forty-one, which was adopted by a vote of thirty-five in the affirmative, seven in the negative, and two abstentions. Introduction and reading of bills.
All bills are being referred to committees as indicated on today's agenda.
There are no resolutions on today's agenda, so we will move into general discussion. We will begin with Councilmember Jonai.
Please, if you can be quiet, as folks on the right. Councilmember Jonai doesn't want to speak. Councilmember King. General discussion.
Good evening, everyone. I rise today to ask for your support to sign on to an introduction to amend a local law, fifteen oh five, and where we're looking to pursue landlords in the City of New York. Over the last summers, we've had trying times with the use of New Yorkers using the drug called K-two synthetic marijuana. Communities have been destroyed, families turned upside down, and the result, and the amendment that I'm asking us all to sign on will hold landlords accountable if they are found that they're tenants who are retail or selling K-two or manufacturing retail, manufacturing K-two, as well as giving the community boards notification that they can also revoke the licenses, alcohol licenses and tobacco licenses of these set stores. I'm asking you to sign on because we're looking to save lives. We're looking to save families. More importantly, we're looking to save communities. And this K-two drug has flipped so many communities from Brooklyn to the Bronx, North, South, and Queens. So I ask you all, please, to sign on to intro fifteen oh five today. Thank you.
Councilmember McAllo's.
NASCAR is more transparent than politics. You can actually see who's paying for the drivers right on the hood of the car. I've introduced legislation, number fifteen oh four, that would require people to check off their industry when they give money, and that would actually get mailed to voters in the form of a pie chart in the voter guide and online. There's a number of people sitting in this room, including one very special person who got elected without.
Hold on, councilmember. If folks can be, be quiet, still in session.
There's a number of people in this room, including one special person who got elected without taking any money from one specific industry. And so the idea is voters would get this pie chart, and if they saw two big slices from an industry they didn't like, for instance, real estate, they might say, you know what, that's not somebody I should vote for. Legislation like this has been around for a little bit. Folks signed a petition with whitehouse.gov to require elected officials to wear NASCAR jerseys with those who gave them money. Unfortunately, that wasn't constitutional. This is. I hope to have your support.
I don't see any other councilmembers. I'd like to say a few words on, on the topic of the day, one I don't envy the speaker on today. In considering the actions to take against any public official, it is important to account for the totality of both the individual in question and the underlying issue at hand, as well as the intention of their actions. First, I always start off by apologizing because I cannot solve the Middle East crisis, and I believe that most of my colleagues here cannot as well, although it seems more and more we are asked to try to do so. I do not believe in making his comments, because I know Councilmember Yeager very well, that he is a bigot, and I don't believe he had the intention of doing harm. And I say that because, as well as my Palestinian friends who often speak up, I do not believe them to be antisemitic. But nor had he considered the unintended and far-reaching consequences of his words, which I do believe discounted an entire group of people who felt attacked and exacerbated the rhetoric around which I call a geopolitical conflict that none of us in New York City government is going to solve. What we do have to make sure, though, is that here in New York City, which I believe has the biggest concentration of Jewish and people who support Israel, as well as Palestinians and people who support Palestine, we have to make sure that both of them feel welcomed in this country, in this country and in the city. And I'm hopeful that his willingness to engage, engage in inclusivity with respect to all, Councilmember Yeager can help heal some of the damage that was caused. However, there should be, and has to be consequences for any elected leader on this issue that engages and inflames this rhetoric. We have to set a standard, and we have to try to stick to it. To the extent that this crisis involves New York City populations, we have to be equitable in the discussions. Up until now, I don't believe we have been. And I think of Mark Lamont Hill, who was by many asked to be fired from CNN from using the words "from the river to the sea." And we should listen to the population that was offended at that. But if Mr. Hill, who was paid to opine, was asked to do that, then someone who is paid to represent everyone should be asked to listen to a population that says saying that Palestine doesn't exist has an effect as them as well. This body that I was a part of last term voted on something that many also thought was free speech and violated the policy of this body. And so in that consistency, I support today's actions that were done today in terms of accountability and equitability. But I'm hoping as we move forward, we realize now we're, we're at a precipice, and that if we're not careful, there will be none of us left to serve on committees or chair committees. So I'm hoping after we've taken the steps which provides equity and accountability, that we rethink how we move forward, not only on this issue, but on all issues. And so I thank you for that time, and I hope we all move forward on equity and standing up against antisemitism, as well as Islamophobia and all the other isms and phobias that exist. We will now call on the speaker to close today's meeting.
Today's stated meeting of April ninth, two thousand nineteen is hereby adjourned.